13 Reinbeck Town Board Meeting, we have no Girl Scouts, so we'll start with the pledge.
[laughing]
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have some Girl Scout news.
Oh, really? Oh, yeah, we do. All right, we have announcements first, and that'll be, you know, I don't have the Girl Scout announcement on this one, do you have?
No, oh, you don't?
Yeah.
Keep that.
All right, just, we've been informed by Girl Scout Troop 10087 of Red Hook that they have just completed a 20-month Silver Award project to fund and install an adaptive swing set at the Red Hook Rec Park to allow children in our area with disabilities to play better and enjoy the playground. So that's available to our community at the Red Hook Rec Park, and we thank the Girl Scout Troop of Red Hook 10087. And congratulations on your hard work. We have a couple other announcements. The Reincliffe Fire Department Rescue Squad are going to have a chili cook-off Saturday, September 14th, at the Fireman's Park, and that's kind of behind the firehouse by the old school.
In Reincliffe.
In Reincliffe. That'll start at 3:00 till, till whenever, but the chili cook-off will happen at 4:45, and it's their fifth annual, first prize will be $100. Run her up, it's $50. And I guess everybody's welcome to show up with their chili and be a part of that. So, a lot of activity for kids and families and so on, so that's September 14th in Reincliffe. Also, the Friends of the Reinbeck Cemetery has organized, and they have formed, and you can find them on Friends of Reincl-- sorry, did I say Reincliffe? Friends of Reinbeck Cemetery. So, friendsofreinbeckcemetery.org, they're gonna have a kickoff on October 6th at the cemetery, and if you have never had cheese and wine at the cemetery, then October 6th is your day, at what time?
Twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars, what time is that?
1:30.
1:30 on the 6th of October.
They're gonna have a tour.
A tour of the cemetery also, historical tour, so congratulations to them.
RSVP at Friends of Reinbeck Cemetery.
We'll have a presentation in the future from the group, so. Also, does anybody have any other announcements? Let's see, anything else? Just one more thing is, if you receive Basic Star and you're not used to re-signing up for that every year, this year is the first year I think they'll be doing that by the end of the year, so Basic Star folks, usually Extended Star has to re-sign up locally at the town hall, at the assessor's office, but this year, everybody has to go and re-sign up for their Basic Star by the end of the year, so be aware of that, otherwise you won't receive your benefits. So, moving on, unless anybody has something else at this point in time, we will just approve the August 26, 2013 Town Board Minutes. Is there a motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, so moved. We've got a number of presentations tonight, we have five listed on our agenda, but I know we're gonna have a sixth one, and we're gonna start with one that's not listed, and that's our Chair of the Cemetery Suzanne Kelly, and this will be followed by Item 5 on, for business, it relates to the cemetery fees, so Suzanne.
Hi, guys. So, yeah, so these are the new proposed cemetery fees. The last cemetery fee revisions were made in 2010, and this, we revisited this because of the new fees for the natural plots, because we'll be opening that in a few weeks, so we decided to revisit the entire fee schedule. So, this is what the cemetery committee is proposing. First, proposing to eliminate the purchase of double plots and make all plots single plot purchases, and raising those from $900 to $1,000. The infant and interment stays the same, cremation stays the same. And then the natural plots, and these were passed already by the Town Board with the rules and regulations, these prices were already passed, but they're included here. The single is $1,300, the infant's the same as the conventional, and cremation is $650. And then the, we are proposing to raise the conventional interments from $820 to $900, the double deep, which are very rare, they're really in the old section, and they rarely do them, but they're there, to $1,200, and cremation to $550 from $510. And then the natural interments will be, the single will be $900, the cremated, cremation will be $600, and infant $400, really doesn't even need to be listed there because it's included, so that should be eliminated. Okay, so, how are we doing so far?
Great. If any of the audience, the ones that were listed were incorrect, but these are the correct ones, so if anyone wants a copy, I can get you one.
This is tab five.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so we're proposing raising removal to $1,200 from $1,000, and adding jackhammering, which apparently is something that we haven't had on there before. Some of the sections of the cemetery are really full of rock. Raising the conventional foundations for monuments from $15 a cubic foot to $20. The corner markers from $30 each to $50. Eliminating the receiving vault, because we don't really use that any longer. And raising the winter frost and snow removal because of gas prices from $100 to $100, including Sunday and holiday burial fees, which we didn't have before, we only had Saturday fees. Those would be $200, just like Saturday, and raising the fee for mausoleum and tomb and from $150 to $200. And, so I listed the observed holidays on here because that would, that reflects the holiday expense, and then, and that's it. And then we just deleted some of the notes in the bottom that don't apply any longer.
Good job on that, and I think we're up, we're to vote on this during the business.
We can vote on it now, if you guys are okay with that, have any questions on it?
Well, I'm afraid, one thing, usually in the budget process, that we come out with a desire to raise fees, and I assume this year will be like all other years. How would you feel if in two months, we want to raise fees when we actually try to do a rough comparison of costs versus revenue for the cemetery?
Well, our, our suggestions for the raising of fees is based on a study that we did of other cemeteries in the area, so it wasn't, it wasn't that kind of a study, but we feel like we need to be competitive with the other cemeteries. We basically fall somewhere in the middle. There are some that are lower, and some that are higher, so that's how, that's how--
But you don't know how revenues match the costs in the cemetery, I gather.
No, but we do know that most cemeteries don't make much money.
I'm not looking to make money, but it would be nice to know if we at least cover our costs.
Yeah.
And you are recommending raises, which presumably will bring in more revenue.
I think that we also need to keep in mind that, we'd be really mindful of how, of how much the other cemeteries in the area are charging, so we don't price ourselves out. And I think that these are really, that these are, you know, these are kind of on the higher end. They are slightly, they're definitely higher than Red Hook, they're higher than Tivoli, they're not higher than the Poughkeepsie Rural Cemetery, but Poughkeepsie Rural Cemetery has 10 full-time employees, so they're in a whole other league than we are.
My question is, will it be disruptive if two months from now--
Disruptive to?
--to the operation of the cemetery if the Board decides that fees should be higher? Now, I understand that there's an argument that you said that they're competitive. Now, we have to be competitive, but who knows what the Board will do in the face of a budget.
We can make that argument when it comes time to do that, Joe. I think, I think we should go ahead and vote on it and move on.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can revisit fees at any time. I do think it's important that we, that we set some clear fees and they're posted for the natural burial plots. That's one of the reasons why we're doing it now, because we are going to open soon, and people are already asking what those fees are, yes. So, we can revisit fees at any time, yeah. I don't think it would be disruptive, but I would hope that these would stand for a while.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Just have one question, do our, do the holidays match the holidays in our employee handbook? Didn't we change one or make one floating? Does this, does this match?
It doesn't match, but, you know, like, the day after Thanksgiving--
Okay, I got them from Gary, so he didn't know he had off the day after Thanksgiving.
We just went, may want to make sure that they match, that there's a consistency for our employees.
Then we'll have to reset it every year.
Well-- Well, we could just say whatever the standard is for that year for the town holidays, okay.
I recommend we adopt this and then just amend it to--
Great. Me too.
All right. So, if there's not any further, we have a motion, a second, to adopt--
Motion?
This is Item, Item--
Five?
You know what? Yeah, Item 5, Resolution 213205, approving the cemetery fees as proposed.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and then so moved. So, thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you, Suzanne.
We have five other items listed, two of them pertain to libraries, are two different libraries in Reinbeck, and we're just gonna readjust the schedule to reflect that, and we'll begin with Steve Sansola from the Morton Memorial Library.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Steve Sansola, and I serve as the President of the Board of Trustees of the Morton Memorial Library and Community House in Reincliffe, New York. And the Board may recall, I came before you in August to inform you that the Morton Memorial Library was in the process of moving forward to request the public to sign a petition to increase our 414 funding. Currently, we are funded through a 414 that was passed in 2006, and we receive currently $35,000 through the town. And, so I have to present to the Board this evening, signed petitions by registered voters in Town of Reinbeck, we're obligated to have more than 10%, or an amount equal to 10% of the last gubernatorial vote, which was 295 signatures. We have 328, we've cross-referenced them with the voter registration list to ensure accuracy. I also have two letters that are notarized, which speak to our recent Board meeting on September 5th, where we passed and adopted the resolution to move forward on this, and that's certified, and then a letter to the County Board of Elections, which just lists a series of statements of information that they need for the process. Also included will be a draft of a letter that the Town Board needs to send to the County Board of Elections through John as a Town Clerk with the information attached. So I have all that information for you. So I want to present that to the Town Board for acceptance, or answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, if you could present that to the Town Clerk.
Thanks, Steve.
Here's the petitions, recover the letter, figure the documents that need to go out to the county. Here's a draft of the letter, but I'll send you electronically, so--
Fabulous.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Will the White Cat be getting anything else?
What?
The White Cat that goes in and out?
October, no, October actually passed away.
Oh, really?
Yeah, magically, so, in fact, we had a, an event in his honor a few months ago, so--
Have a plot listed at the cemetery for him? Oh.
Joe.
Steve, you would ask for what, another $47,000?
Uh, 42,000, we currently get the 35, so that'd be a total contribution of $77,000.
And am I correct, that somebody told me that that would apply toward our tax cap, so that probably would require us to override the tax cap--
Well, we as a library--
If successful.
Right, we as a library board will have the ability to override that with a quorum on our, on our library board to pass that.
You can override the tax cap for the town?
No, for the library, as a library organization, as a board, we can also in our minutes request to override a tax cap to move forward with this.
Oh, it's a request to us, but we're the ones who have to override the tax cap, you can't.
Um, you know, I'm--
I assume.
I don't have the kind of response that I can give you with authenticity. My understanding is, we can present the petition to the town, falls within our legal responsibilities.
I talked to Shelley, excuse me, she says, "The library tax caps doesn't affect our tax cap." They have to report their income separately, they do their own AUDs, so--
So you don't think that would--
It's not gonna go over. We were under that impression, but, but she said that she checked, because we--
It's exempt.
Yeah.
Right, it's separate.
We got gigged on it the year before because we didn't understand that, or she didn't.
I guess one other, a couple of other questions. The Star Library is gonna make a presentation after you, hopefully you'll stay. How does that work? And I don't know if you know what they're asking for--
Well, I'm aware, but I'm gonna defer to them, I don't know if Steve is presenting or--
Yeah, let's let the Star Library represent what they have to say.
--for Sue Harton, and then if you have questions regarding--
Let him do it, yeah.
They could speak to it, and I can, I'll certainly stay.
Okay, so we can ask you some more questions.
All right, thanks, Steve.
Okay.
Yeah, if you would stay, though, I appreciate it, because there might be some confusion. So, we're gonna move to Item 5 for next, which would be the Star Library presentation from Steve Cook, if you're ready.
Thank you very much, I'm Stephen Cook, I'm the Director of the Star Library, the other library in Reinbeck. We have been serving the town since 1862. Some of you may be aware that we had our 150th anniversary last year, and in terms of the library, our business is growing, even in this time of eBooks and eBook readers, our circulation is rising, our visits are increasing, and we find ourselves doing a lot of things in the community. We have a lot more meetings at the library, a lot of community groups use our space, the Alzheimer Support Group, the Holistic Moms, we have writers' groups, we have job seekers who use our facilities, we have people who run their businesses using our Wi-Fi at the library, trying to, trying to get ahead. We offer homework help for students, we have early learning and literacy programs, and basically, we, in the absence of a community center, have worked very hard to become Reinbeck's community center, where all kinds of groups can come and use the facilities. In addition to the, you know, the increased visits, we have increased our programming. We now have about 375 programs a year. Some of that includes things like story hour for kids, and a number of discussions. In fact, tomorrow night, we have author Malachi McCourt speaking at the library, so that is sold out in terms of seats, but standing room is available. So we're open seven days a week, 52 hours a week, and we really do work hard to, to serve all of the community. We are, as Morton Memorial is, an association library, and that is just a way that the state of New York State Ed categorizes us. There are other kinds of libraries, municipal libraries, school district, school district libraries, and what we're here for tonight is to, to talk about special district libraries. We currently receive $225,000, that was voted by the taxpayers in a referendum, and that, that money goes towards our budget, but it is not our whole budget. The library board has worked hard in the last few years to increase the amount of fundraising that we do ourselves. We continue to grow slowly and gradually, and we have, as the budget increases and as our tax allotment stays the same, we have had to work harder to, to raise those funds. You know, we do book sales, we also make money on overdue books, we have an annual campaign that we raise money, and, you know, we're, we're finding actually that, you know, it's more difficult to grow, and that our funding is not keeping up with the increased usage that we are seeing. So, the Star Library Board has analyzed the possibilities for what to do, and in the context of our long-range plan, which we have worked on over the years, I was faced with a question of, should we do another 414 vote, which is what we have done, and which is what Morton is proposing that they do, or whether the library should become a special district? That special district is, it's an independent taxing district, but we looked at it, and we thought that the benefits to becoming a special district, the benefits for the community and the benefits for the library weighed heavily in, in that, in its favor. Couple of aspects of this, transparency of budgeting. The public votes every year on the library's budget, they have a lot of direct input. Trustees are elected to the Board, again, this is something that, it's just a participatory democracy, and this is a form of library structure that New York State Ed and the Mid-Hudson Library System have encouraged libraries when able to work towards. So, our Board has, you know, believes in this special district process. We follow in the footsteps of another, a number of other libraries in the area, Kingston, Hyde Park, Poughkeepsie, Wapengers, Stone Ridge, East Fishkill. Libraries large and small have found this structure to be worth it for them. It is not for everyone, there are, there are, I'm sure, compelling reasons that libraries may wish to pursue other arrangements, but we have found in our work that this seems to make the most sense for the Star. So, we would be an independent government entity, but we do present to the public every year. So, an annual vote hits us in the public eye. You know, it shows people on a yearly basis, in addition to what we do in the community, which show them, you know, it gives us our chance to state our case, this is what we believe the library has done, and we ask for your support. It's a tool of greater accountability. So, what we are asking for in our process to become a special district, the first step for us beyond a vote of the library board is to come to the Town Board. We are seeking a letter of home rule. That sort of positions us as having proof that we've informed our town of what our goals are, and in the next steps, which include working with State Senator Terry Gibson and Assembly Member Kevin Cahill, they need to help us also, we need help all the way up through the Governor. We have to have legislation crafted, and this is something that happens every year all through the state, a number of libraries work to become a special district. We need to have legislation passed in both the Assembly and the Senate, and then it has to be reconciled, it has to go to the Governor for his signature, and then once all of that is done with our, with our legislation, we put a referendum on the ballot for the voters in Reinbeck. Shall a special district be created? We would have to do a lot of research in terms of asking, you know, for a budget amount, and then, going forward, as I said, a vote every year, and we are subject to our own tax cap. We are currently, as is the Morton Memorial Library, we are not part of your, your calculations, and I expect in the next couple of days to get a letter from the Office of the State Comptroller, where we have to file our intentions about whether we're going to go over the, well, this year it's a 1.6 something percent tax cap or not. So we are independent of your calculations, but the town would continue to act as our agent in collecting the taxes and passing them through to us, should the taxpayers vote to approve the special district. So that's kind of where we're headed, and I'd be glad to answer questions.
I have a couple. Before we pass the referendum to give you an annual amount in 2006, were you this, a special district before, were you something else, or?
We have always been an association library. We were created in 1862 by an act of the state legislature, predating the state education department, predating charters, predating everything. So, one of the loose ends, after 150 years, that I tied up was I got us a charter, we are an association library and have always been.
So how did you get funding? You just came to the Town Board every year for a budget time and said, "This is what we need," and then that led to such up and down that you just needed a finite amount to be better budgeted, and--
Back in the day, I mean, it was always tough for libraries to rely on their municipalities. I mean, boards are frequently struck by the vagaries of rising and falling income. The state allows libraries to directly ask taxpayers, and that's the chapter 414 of state law, and that's what we took advantage of in 2005, and then Morton Memorial Library, we went for a joint 414 vote later, and that's where we are today.
Okay, so, and how does the vote actually work? Do you have to be a member of the library, or just a member of the community to vote?
You mean the vote for when you turn, when it changes?
If, if it changes, right.
Everyone who is an eligible voter has a say in this. In effect, association libraries are almost, they're not private, but, I mean, they work for the common good, but there is a, there's a self-elected board, and then the tax money is administered by this board.
So everyone in the town would vote, and they would vote at the library? They wouldn't vote here and in an election?
No, the legislation, in fact, that's one of the things from, from the state, the legislation as written by our legislators, and they certainly have input from us, this is not their business to, you know, write. But normally, it's, it's held in a date, a date and time as described in the legislation, and it's often held in the public library itself.
Okay, that's all I had.
So you're, you're becoming a special district, but that's not limited to the town boundaries, are you limiting your--
Our charter is that we serve the entire town of Reinbeck. We have heard that Red Hook is trying to figure out some of their boundaries, and there is a small, there are two small portions of Reinbeck and Red Hook, where the school district is Red Hook, but it's in the town of Reinbeck, and there might be a little adjustment that way, but we would plan on serving the entire town of Reinbeck, as we always have.
But would you, I mean, would you include the school district as part of your boundaries? I mean, is it beyond Reinbeck, or is it?
That is another possibility, to become a school district library, and that would be more complicated because it would involve the Morton Memorial Library, and it would involve also the Clinton Library, because they are in, they are in the town of Clinton, but some of their territory is in the town, their library territory is in the town of Reinbeck. So, that is a possibility that the Board pondered briefly and thought the special district remained the better alternative.
The money that you decide you need for your budget, assuming this new structure, that would go on the tax bill as a separate item that we send out in the beginning of each year?
Yes.
Is that how it would work?
Library tax.
I guess I like the idea of the transparency and the budget every year. People would vote on this budget every year, and, you know, that's democracy, people can decide how much they want to spend on a library. The Town of Clinton Library, you know, we don't support, we do support somewhat. Morton, I would love to see Morton included in this, so that the taxpayers can decide how much they want to spend in total for libraries, rather than us paying some through our budget process, you raising your own money. Is there a possibility, either now or in the future, of including Morton in this?
I am sure there is. You have two libraries in town with long histories as independent organizations, and that 2005, 2006 referendum indicated the support of the taxpayers for two libraries. We have held discussions. I think Morton is interested in continuing the dialogue, but at this point-- But at this point, I think I wouldn't want to speak for you too much, but I think I could characterize it as you would, the Morton Memorial Library would wish to remain independent at this point.
But you could have two libraries in the same district. Or would it mean that either you or Morton would have to give up your existence or could a library district include two different libraries but with the one budget that goes to the voters for both?
I think to achieve that scenario, Morton and STAR would have to be much closer in their operations and there would, it would not be the current situation of two independent libraries.
I'm just thinking, you know, we have a structure of a village and a town and we certainly know the governor would love us to consolidate or share services. And so, that's the impetus for my question. That seems to be a trend. Now, we certainly haven't acted on that presently with the village and the town, but certainly it's a question that keeps coming up by residents, so.
So, from us, you, you would look for a letter of home rule? And we would have to go to our attorney and have something worked up or something like that?
I have a couple of sample letters that the Mid-Hudson Library System.
You need the board to approve this letter? The town board has to approve this letter for you or is that what you need?
We would wish it to be on town letterhead with someone's signature.
Well, you can't do this without a town board's approval, is that what you mean?
I wouldn't want to. I mean, this is something that it's, it's basically you wishing us good luck on our journey.
But really, there's no law that requires you to come to us and ask for a letter or otherwise you can't move on. Right? You can do it without us.
In?
I certainly would like counsel to let us know about that.
I think they just have to notify us.
Oh, I don't know. I'm not getting an answer. I'm not, I'm not really so sure about that.
In Hyde Park and Statsburg, they decided to create a special district and there was conflict between whether Statsburg should be part or separate. And Senator Saland really didn't want to get involved in a local disagreement where there was no upside for him, so he was like, "I'm gonna wait." So, to show our elected representatives that there is no disagreement from the board, it's just something that we can show Senator Gibson and Assembly Member Cahill that we have done our due diligence and that you are aware of our efforts. And basically, I have a couple of sample letters which are just, we, you know, to whom, all in sundry, we wish the best for the name of library as they pursue their lifelong dreams.
But it sounds like we may want to run this by Warren.
Do we have a time constraint?
I totally understand that you would want to have an attorney take a look at this. So, I mean, it's by the, you know, early October.
Next meeting, maybe?
October.
Do we want to discuss if we're in favor of writing this letter?
I have no problem with it unless Warren comes back with something. I trust them, they've wrangled with it for years and years and if they've decided that this is the best thing for them, I trust their judgment.
I support it. So, I think we need to discuss if we're in favor of this and then we can direct our attorney or to draft a letter or review what, what the library's passing on to us.
The problem I have with this right now, I think we should go to, I like the concept and everything. I'm just concerned that it's a special district and it's a town special district. And that means if, for some reason, you decide to do something that costs the town money, we would still be on the hook. I want to be, I want to be sure that that isn't the case.
What do you mean, Bruce? Like a?
Like the sewer system is a special district.
But it's only specific to the people in the district?
Yeah, but we're responsible for, we're ultimately responsible for any debt or anything that goes on there, ensuring it and everything else. So, we want to, we want to understand just a little crisper, I guess, what our liabilities are, if any. But I, I think it makes sense for you to, to do what you're doing. I just want to understand it a little better.
We would remain completely independent of the town and you are not responsible for any debts that we incur at this point? And there would be no change?
Well, it would be changing because you become our special district.
We become a special district in the town, not of the town.
Well, that's what I want to be sure of.
Okay. Fine.
That's, that's, yep.
Okay.
Because you wouldn't have to go through us for taxes if that was the case.
They're not, it's your idea.
We are not an independent collection entity. No. We would need the mechanism that the town has to collect taxes as you do now for us and for Morton Memorial.
I guess the other thing, if somebody doesn't pay taxes, is my understanding is the county reimburses us for that and the county goes after it. I wonder if that's true with a special district, if unpaid taxes, I think that's something we ought to ask.
It is with, it is with the sewer district. If people don't pay in the sewer district, then the county reimburses them.
Okay. So, we should make sure that that works the same way for the library.
Then we would have the same obligation. That's what I'm concerned about.
So, we'll run it by Warren.
Okay.
Bruce, when you say the same obligation, what do you mean?
That ultimately, we're, the rest of the town is going to be responsible for the district if something goes bonkers.
Aren't we kind of now?
No, no. Right now, with the funding, they have a separate board, a separate government, they're just, they get part of their funding from us. If we say we're a special district, I would just want to be sure that it's not a town special district and it's their special district and we're just doing a service collecting it. That's all I want to understand.
Okay. Would you explain it to me when you understand it?
Well, we gotta have Warren explain it to us, yeah.
I think we need, Steve, what do you think about?
About STAR's interest in becoming a taxing library district?
Yeah, and whether this is something that Morton at some point might be interested in joining. Because I do like the concept of the transparency and having the voters decide annually as to how much they want to pay for libraries.
Do you, you don't have to comment on it if you don't want to.
No, I would just say that as Morton Library Board, our position is we want to remain independent presently. Our financial needs are less than STAR. They have other program, more financial needs that are different than ours. I think Morton itself is unique in that it's a very old federal and state historic facility. We want to see it remain for the good of the community. We think we offer some unique services, just the STAR office, some unique programs and services. And we think going forward with our 414 is what's best for Morton. And we want to support STAR's endeavor based on the decision made on the 414 at the election in November.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Steve.
All right. So, we'll follow up with this in October.
It's on our agenda.
Item, where are we at here?
I'm sorry, can I, Steve Cook, you are gonna forward us some template letters so that we can?
Excellent. Pass them on to John.
Yeah, give it to the clerk, please. Next item up for presentation is Gillian Adams from Shippo on historic preservation.
Thank you, Town. This is on?
Yeah, it might be too far away from you now.
Is that okay? Thank you, Town Board, for inviting me. I had a chance to email you before we started the meeting and I'm sorry I didn't get to you, Mr. Washburn over there. I saw you running around the room, I couldn't catch you. I'm with the State Historic Preservation Office. We are the official branch of state government that oversees all federal and state historic preservation programs from New York State. We are established by an act of Congress in 1966 and we have quite a few programs that help understand, document, and also benefit historic resources and their owners across New York State. One program in particular I would like to speak about tonight is one I've actually come to your earlier committee, where I met Nancy and several other people in the room, to talk about the program we run, which is called the Certified Local Government Program. That program was established in 1980 to incentivize and encourage best practices and local historic preservation programs. I was told by Elizabeth, I either had five minutes or as much time as I needed, so I'm gonna try to fall somewhere in between there.
Well, you came all the way down from Morton.
Take your time.
I do think we ought to let you speak.
Take your time.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. I also have to go back tonight, so I'll find somewhere in the middle of me.
Only you can decide the balance.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I always like to, I, I'm a great fan. I live in the Hudson Valley, up in Albany, and I'm a great fan of the Hudson Valley. And every time I have family come up from the south where I'm from, if you hear a certain accent now and then, you'll know where I'm from. The one place we always go is the Hudson Valley because of its history and its appearance and its architecture and its villages and its estate buildings and its countryside. And those are all very important parts, not only of the visual character of the Hudson Valley as well as other parts of New York State, they're also a big part of your economic driver around here. Historic resources and the historic landscape and historic villages are a large reason why the Hudson Valley has become so popular over the past 20 or 30 years. People have discovered it as a wonderful place to go spend time. Now, one thing you have to worry about in that whole time is the increasing development pressures that can come up the river. I have met recently with New Rochelle, who is dealing with the fact that the transportation based development, they're welcoming there to revitalize their downtown, they're trying to make sure it doesn't crash into their historic area and make their town over to they never longer recognize it. So, I'm working with New Rochelle to put protections in place for the historic areas to figure out how they want to progress their growth and how they want to invite the economic development of their town while protecting the best of their past. Historic preservation in America has always been a story of either running ahead of loss or reacting to loss. The first time, and excuse me for a little history lesson here, at Harlem and historian by our first training, the first time we bump into historic preservation in America is in 1815 when Independence Hall was threatened with demolition. At that point, it was just another rundown old building that was not yet 100 years old. And it was right in the way of development for the city of Philadelphia for a great deal of mercantile and warehouse storage. If you have to remember, that was before the Erie Canal opened and Boston, Philadelphia, and New York were still battling for supremacy or who'd be the largest port on the eastern seaboard. Of course, New York won with the Erie Canal opening, but Philadelphia, and they were all building very rapidly. And Independence Hall was right in the way of basic offices and warehouse space. I always say very little changes in American history. A group of citizens stood up and said, "This building is more important than the land it sits on, the value of the land it sits on." This building has a lot of important recollections and connotations beginning of our country. The city agreed and the city purchased it from the owners to force preservation. The only reason we have it today is because citizens stood up and said, "You know what? We need to act on behalf of this building because we just can't let, live at the vagaries of the market." That was a very important moment in historic preservation. Now, through the 19th century, we have all these American Revolution connections. We have Washington's headquarters in Newburgh, the state bought in 1850 for its preservation to set it aside as a memory of George Washington. We have things throughout the 19th century, the big man, called the Great House, the big, the big man and great house theory of history. And that took a turn in the 1920s when the city of Williamsburg, Virginia, was set aside as a museum village. And that was done very craftily by the Rockefellers, one of the local names around here, when a local priest who knew the value, what he had around there, the Booton Parish Church Father, sort of approached the Rockefellers and said, "You have a picture of American history right here in brick and wood and stone and we could lose it very rapidly if we don't try to protect it." And the Rockefellers slipped in, started buying up things and eventually established historic Williamsburg, which was the first time in America set aside a collection of buildings for their preservation interpretation. Great idea, but can you get a pizza in Williamsburg? Can you get Chinese food? Can you get a dry cleaning done? No, it's set aside specifically for preservation interpretation. That takes an important leap forward in 1931 in Charleston, South Carolina. Now, I had an aunt who grew up, who lived in Charleston, so I spent quite a bit of time there as a child, and she always reminded me that Charleston did not sit on the peninsula where the Ashken and the Cooper rivers came together to form Charleston Harbor, rather as Charlestonians saw it, it's set at the intersection of the Ashken and the Cooper rivers where they came together to form the Atlantic Ocean. Very, very high opinion of themselves and they built as such. Architecture in Charleston is unique in the United States for its character and its flavor and its form. Everything about it is very unique. But 1929, 1930, they lost three major houses to a gas station. That still happens in upstate New York today in 2013. Three major houses that they identified themselves very strongly with as part of their heritage were taken out for a gas station. And they said, "What can we do about it?" And the local government said, "Well, nothing." And the local citizens said, "I think we should." And they put the first ordinance in place to designate and protect historic resources in the United States. That's why they have the historic resources there. They have traded on for almost 100 years now for their economic engine. This following, that was the French Quarter in New Orleans, which was almost flattened for a parking lot. They lost one major building for a parking lot in the French Quarter and they said, "Didn't Charleston do something over there? I think we want to check over there." So, that idea staggers along. We have San Francisco, Santa Fe, San Antonio stumbling along, putting local preservation laws in place. New York City joins in 1967 after the loss of Penn Station, which was basically torn down for something they were thinking about tearing down again now for something better. The Penn Plaza Building and Madison Square Garden. America's greatest train station, less than 50 years old, flattened, which for something that's, is a long-term temporary. This kind of moved along and moved along. And New York City put a law in place in the 60s and it didn't pop up really as a hot issue until Grand Central was threatened around 1976. Many of you mightn't remember that battle. There was a huge hue and cry. "We can't lose Grand Central. We lost Penn Station." New York City walked up, there was a proposal put forward by the owners at the time to put a 50-story glass box on top of Grand Central and turn its grand concourse into levels of offices. And the owners went to the city and said, "Hey, we want to do this." And the city said, "It's landmarked. You can't do that." And they said, "You can't tell us to do with our property. We can do what we want." The city said, "Well, here's our law we passed. That's unconstitutional." Well, it was proven that it was. Went all the way to the Supreme Court in 1978 and the Supreme Court said, "Hey, you, you protect lot line issues, electrical code, water code, sanitary code, building code, height restriction, use everything. This is just another layer of how a city or a village or a town chooses to protect its character and make its quality of life better for its residents." They determined that Grand Central was landmarked, that the owners were making money, they didn't take the property. That's a constitutional trap door. If you take the property through these laws, then you can actually have an out from the law. But they determined they weren't. And the only reason we have Grand Central right now left and then has been repolished as a jewel of New York City is because New York City had a local law and had designated their, their, that place. After the court case came out in 78, everybody ran for the roads. They wanted, they, "We want a law. We want a law." They've been thinking about it or wondering about it and suddenly this big national court case hits, hit the news about how local preservation worked, how it's constitutional, and they didn't have to step out on faith anymore. They had it from the Supreme Court. In 1980, the Park Service said, "Wait a minute. We know how to do this. It's been done since 1931 in Amer- in America in Charleston. We know what works. We know it doesn't work. And you know what? You don't have to reinvent the wheel." And they created the Certified Local Government Program, handed it down to us to administer at New York State level. Every state has one of these programs. We drafted a model law by preservation lawyers and city officials, municipal attorneys, that we know does the job. It's, you don't have to make it up. You don't have to learn by trial and error. It's a model law that New York State has. I always tell people, well, Nancy's had a copy of it. I believe a copy of it may have been circulating at the town board for a while. I tell folks, you can certainly tweak it to fit your local situations, which can bend it out of shape after a while. It is, there is best practices. Right now, I have 75 communities in New York State who have such a law and are a member of this network. Locally around the region, you've got New Paltz Village and Town, Socrates Village and Town, Poughkeepsie, Peak Skill, Newburgh. A little further afield, you've got, you've got New Rochelle, you've got New York City of all places. You've got Rockland County, the entire county, Montebello in Rockland County. You've got going up the Hudson River, you've got Albany, Saratoga, Malta. There are 75 scattered across New York State. All told, there are 200 communities with local preservation laws in New York State. 75 of them meet our qualifications for, as we say, best practices. I always encourage communities to look at the law, think about considering them. It's a way to protect your community's character. One thing that people are always concerned with is they will tell me, "Well, you can't tell me what to do with my property." I'll go, "Well, go talk to your planning department, your building department, because you have to get permits for demolition, construction. You have to meet lot line requirements. You have to meet sanitary sewer. You have to meet electrical code. You have to meet building material code. You have to go get a curb cut permit." They're all things you do as part of a community to live together to make sure that you have a good quality of life as a group and it's not just living in an anarchic society. This is one more way to do that. It is not freezing in time. You're not creating Williamsburg. You're looking to have a community that grows and accepts change. The key for this is you're not freezing time, you're managing the change. You're making sure that the best of your past, the character that makes up the town, is carried forward with you and any kind of changes, any kind of growth you may encourage and may incentivize here. So, at the end of the day, you have an improved and hopefully a vital and flourishing town, but at the same time, you know it's Reinbeck. You haven't lost the most significant parts of your past, which really are part of your stock in trade here in the Hudson Valley. People always ask me, "What are the benefits of having this local law?" I always tell people, if you're not using historic preservation as part of your planning efforts, you're leaving one hand tied behind your back. Because historic preservation, heritage tourism, and just the quality of life and the character of an area is a proven sales technique, a proven sales brochure out there in the stone and the brick and the wood already waiting for you to cash in on. The key is finding a way to protect it. The key is finding a way to protect it and not have something suddenly go down for a gas station or suddenly go down for a shopping plaza. You certainly need gas stations, you need shopping plazas, but at the same time, they're good and better places to put them as part of your planning efforts. The CLG program provides a way into a program we know works, the ground, log and hit the ground working and doing the job you might want it to do. We provide training through the state for commissioners. A commission is appointed by the town board, it is town business, but what we help people do is understand the law and train them in how they can act and how they can work, and also train the town board and things as well. We provide the legal, professional, and technical expertise for your local efforts, because not many people do that. So we provide that service for you at the state level. There's also a grant program that's only open to CLGs, the Certified Governments. It's federal money that we get and our federal money to do our job, we have to pass at least 10% of it through to our member communities. We do that through a competitive grant round every year. There are things such as surveys, to see what's out there historic, there are ways to do design guidelines, to help people understand what the town is looking for in its historic preservation efforts, you can do publicity, education, training. We always look for creative ideas too. We say, "Tell us what you want and let's see how we can work together to do a grant application." That's money only available to CLGs. Like I said, there are 75 existing CLGs across the state right now, so you're not doing it alone. There's a great quote by a social satirist who lives in New York City, she said, "Original thought is like original sin, both happened a long time ago to people you could not have possibly known." So you can actually use and share the experiences of your sister CLGs, your sister Ms. Powell, you're not flying it alone. And I always try to stress people that it's not a new idea, it's coming, it's 100th anniversary in the United States, and it's a proven tool in local planning and local character definition. You only have to go up as far as Saratoga, in 1975, the mall opened at exit 15 in Saratoga on the Northway, and their downtown emptied. It had a 75% vacancy rate in their downtown. Beautiful architecture, but nobody there. Well, there could have been a, "Hey, let's tear it all down and build a matching mall," or "Let's just stand back and watch happen what happens." And they said, "No, we've got to protect our character, because the only thing we have left to sell is our character." And they put the local law in place in 75, and now the local mall is closing down bit by bit by bit, because everyone wants to be back where the character is. The J.C. Penney's there is now like a warehouse, because the mall is dying and downtown Saratoga is growing. It's got great housing going up downtown that meets the character of the downtown, it's got new commercial buildings going that go through the review processes of the local preservation committee to make sure that the character of Saratoga is reinforced and kept. That's just one example. Again, there's places all over the state like that, and all over the United States, there are almost 2,000 CLGs in New York, in the country that have a version of this law. So it's not something new, it's not something unproven, and it's not anything that we have to wonder how it happens. I just want to keep this conversational, that's the spiel I have. I would like to have any questions or comments. I know you've had a committee in the past that I believe put a law forward, I believe, was that it?
A draft.
A draft of the law. And I've just, I'm always saying, "Well, what's next? What's the next steps?" Because if you want to move forward, I'm here to help. If you think about it longer, you can call me and we can have a conversations. I left our little piece of, well, our propaganda there on the table, on the CLG program as well as my business card. You can email me, you can call me with any questions, you don't have to do it all tonight. I always say, if I can't find an answer for you, I will certainly look it up and get back to you. So any questions?
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
I understand you have this model law.
Yes.
I guess in our conversations, however brief they were, you had indicated there's kind of a whole range of possibilities, from you don't do anything with an historic structure home without a commission, which would be appointed by the town board without their permission, to you have a group of people who would advise homeowners as to historic structure and how you do renovation, but the homeowner who bought the historic structure could go ahead and take or not take the advice, that there's a whole range
Right.
of things. Do you have laws or drafts that you could send us of this whole range?
We have one law.
Okay.
That's advisory committees always fail. I've seen people with advisory committees, in 15 years, you didn't know what the town you were in by the end of it, because nobody listened to them, and they weren't given the power of law. This is actually in addition to your building code. It's required by your building department that designated areas should not be given a permit until they go through the building, through the process. It has to have the power of law, or otherwise we would have a parking lot where Charleston is, would have a, more super domes where the French Quarter is. It has to have the power of law. Now you say, "Well, we're not those two cities." Well, they didn't think they were very big at the time they put it in place, they were actually looking to protect their own home, their own character, they weren't looking to market themselves to the world, they were trying to protect themselves and go, "Hey, we can't lose our buildings piece by piece by piece by piece, because if you have 10 years and a project every year, that could be an entire streetscape." And I am not a fan of advisory.
Right, but are you saying you couldn't provide us
I don't have them.
with these models?
You can certainly find them online, but my job is to present the model law we know works.
Right, I understand you're advocating your
I'm advocating
Your version.
The New York State version. And I have honestly, the places that have gone advisory, usually in about 10 or 15 years go, "Uh-uh, this isn't working."
Which places are those?
Well, I've done places like Clarence, we've had places up and down the river where we've said, "We want a larger, bigger law." A lot of people get them up, that initial law, and after a while they go, "This isn't working." They lose a major building, they lose a streetscape, and they come back up. Now, I've been working in the program for 25 years, so I can't give you an entire list of communities, but I've had the program grow in the last five from 45 to 75. There's a renewed interest in this and almost an urgency to it across New York State, because we're having more development pressures than we've had in some time. Parts of New York City are waking back up, and we want that development, want that money, but at the same time, a community has the right, as a governing body and as a populace, to say, "This is how we want our community to look." Same with your vote in your library, the community can say, "Hey, this is how much we want to give the library." The community can have a say in how the community moves forward. Yes.
If an entire county adopts it, does that mean that every town in that county automatically has to follow it?
No, the county is
Counties can opt out.
County is an odd duck. We have one county in New York State, and that county is Rockland. And the county, what a county CLG does basically is catch the places that aren't covered by municipalities. So there are quite a few counties, there are very few incorporated places, very, very incorporated, very few incorporated municipalities of some kind of any size. And the county then kind of sucks up what is missing out there.
Got it.
But they have to sign into it, it's not like automatic.
Right.
A county can't cross municipal line like you can't go into a county's jurisdiction, there are separate jurisdictions. I had a question before the meeting about things such as the waterfront redevelopment area as a state program. Totally separate jurisdictions, this is your local government putting a protection in a place, the LR
LWRP.
LWRP comes in.
LWRA.
You would have the conversation. One doesn't trump the other, because usually state has to talk to the local municipalities, they don't have to take the advice usually, but when you have a local law protecting historic resources, they usually step up and go, "Oh, you're serious about it, we need to talk to you." The state and federal governments usually take communities with local laws a little more seriously in grant applications, in projects, because they go, "Oh, you've got this law on the books, and you're concerned about your local resources, and we're going to talk to you." Gives you a little more, a little more oomph.
Great. The grant money available per year, about how much is that?
I get about $200,000 a year to give out. I give projects from $5,000 to $60,000. I gave one to Buffalo last year of 60 grand to do an entire assessment of their abandoned industrial structures so they can market them. Because Buffalo, we've got 20 projects in downtown Buffalo, turning that downtown around, and they're looking to say, "Okay, let's move it to our industrial sector." And they're looking to market those. $5,000 can be a publication, it can be a training, it can be a survey, anything such as that.
I just have one more question.
No, I'm going to sing, thank you.
We did receive a draft of a law, I'm going to address our historian as well. Was that law from this group? Can you, do you mind speaking to us, Nancy? Thank you.
The local law was developed by getting the draft from the state, and then our committee met and made changes that we thought were appropriate to Ryan Beck. So I think that it still addresses the concerns that the state has, but it is something that has been tailored for Ryan Beck. As we talked to our planning and zoning boards, we realized that there are more and more historic buildings, those that are on the multi-resource district and along the river in the landmarks district, that are being suggested for changes. And lots of times, the owners don't realize the significance of the building, what kinds of things are important to preserve, and just the education that's involved with this kind of a situation is very, very valuable.
If I could speak to a point, I want to get back to a point you made. This is not a historic museum law. This is not a museum law, it's not a museum village law. It recognizes that we have different needs, your bathrooms, kitchens, garages, maybe our sightings fall off, maybe our roof needs replacing, maybe we need a larger bedroom for mother-in-law moving in. It guides the change, it does not freeze the building in time like amber, you know, we find the insects in amber, look like just they did 30,000 years ago. At the end of the day, let's say 10, 15, 20 years, you have buildings that have flexed, you have buildings that have turned from residential to commercial, you have buildings that have turned from a single family to a multifamily. You may have a building that's grown a bit, but the key is that you need to make sure that in the growth process, Ryan Beck doesn't lose its character. The village of Sag Harbor on Long Island is an incredibly wealthy place with a lot of development pressure, but a long time ago, they decided to put a law, this law, into place because they knew with the development coming their way, they would be overwhelmed, and basically remodeled out of existence. Their law has proven to actually make sure that when you drive into Sag Harbor, you're still in Sag Harbor. And they have not stopped one enlargement project, one development project, one economic development project. In fact, it helps guide those, because people want to be where that character is, and this helps protect it.
Your model law would create a commission that would issue permits, and if you can't get a permit, there's an appeal process, is that how it works?
Yes, sir. It's called a certificate of appropriateness, and anything other than normal maintenance and repair would have to come before the commission. I've seen most commissions do like a 90%, just, "Hey, that looks good, that looks good," because they've done the upfront education of the homeowners, the homeowner knows what they're expecting. The worst thing is for a homeowner not to know anything what the commission's expecting. He'll work with commissions to educate the public through publications. If there is a problem, the commission will say, "Hey, that is going to cross our lines." Every good law has standards of what is good and what is bad. That's crossing our line, and they'll enter a conversation with the owner and says, "Hey, can you, can you talk about this? We understand you need a larger whatever, let's put it over here, can't resign there." At the end of the day, there are two things that can happen. They can say, "No," and the owner says, "I don't feel like I got treated fairly," and they can get an appeal. Now, an appeal to a town board, or some people do it to a zoning board of appeals or a town board, is a process check, because in reality, you don't step into your fire department and go, "I think you didn't have that right," or your electrical code, and say, "I disagree with your electrical code." You're a process check, to make sure that person got his day in court and got his due process served under the law. You're not there for a second panel of expertise of, "Hey, I think it looks historic." Otherwise, if you did that with every commission, every board you had, what use are they? You're there to make sure that person got his constitutional protections of due process. If at the end of the day, the property owner, and I'll use an example of a commercial owner, let's say you had one of those cute little one-bay gas stations, go to the English Cottage, they're all over the place, I think you have one up here that's converted or somewhere on Main Street. If that was still a gas station, who's going to make a profit on that these days? Okay? One little bay, one little office, and one little gas pump. Goes for the commission, "I need four more garage bays, or I can't make a living here." And they go, "Well, four more garage bays is really going to make that building look like this, and it's not going to meet in our guidelines, and we have to say no." That enables him to go right to the hardship process, it goes, "I can't make a living without this." That's a constitutional door, that says, "You cannot take that person's property, you cannot deprive them of use and enjoyment and profit." Reasonable return is the term that the Supreme Court used. So if the owner can come before the appeals board or the hardship board, which could be the town board, and makes a case economically that, "I've tried, you know, I'm not just want to do this, I would need to do this for my livelihood, I need to do this for my reasonable return on my property," then you can say, "We are granting that hardship." Now, what you have to do then is, he just can't go build a glass box on the side of it. It needs to be a conversation back through design with the commission to how to do it, because there's always, can you put it at a 45? Can you put it behind? Can you put it at a right angle? What can we do to keep that building's character somewhat? Can we do a little break? But a person's right to reasonable return and economic use of their property is protected in this law, in our model law.
So are we, so we're not at the point of adopting this law, and Julian is here to show himself as a resource for us, right? And I don't think we have a law in front of us right now to be adopted, right?
Whenever, I'm at your time.
No, we don't. This is really just an educational
It was suggested, it was suggested that we look at it, and that
Yeah.
several months ago.
So is that, so that is still outstanding, it's not like we did not
Yeah, there is no pending
There's no action.
So really, the scenario is, I mean, we're talking about a lot of different things, it's really vague, and we can do this all night long. We have models here with our CAC and Sauerkamp fourth, which we'd follow, which kind of answer the questions that you have done, where they could be an advisory committee to the planning board or whatever, so, you know, we could, we could keep going on and going on.
Let me just ask one.
One more question.
One more question.
Then I'll, then I'll be quiet.
My understanding is you start with a finite group of buildings, probably things on the National Registry, but is there a way that that gets expanded in the future under your
The commission has survey and designation power. In other words, they can look around and see what's out there through surveys, and they can designate things as historic. Now, we always say, even if you're listed on the National Registry, that's a federal program, we need to re-designate them at the local process.
I'm sorry, the state would designate this?
No, this is you, this is local government.
Okay.
The commission would either designate or recommend designation up to the town board. Now, it's always good to start with your national registry buildings, that we know about them, you know, we know there's a kind of a consensus that they're historic, but you actually have to go through the designation process locally to do that, because it's a local law and not a federal law.
Right.
I also tell people, don't fight off more than you can chew at first, don't pick a fight, you know, for your property battles, go with people you know will work with you, know peoples there are consensus on. And yes, you have situations where districts are added or individual properties are added, and that's their work. Their work is to ongoing, like I said, Charleston's been going on since '31, and they've added local preservation districts. New Orleans has been going on '37. The Garden District, which was thought of as the new part of town, then is now protected because they realize that's part of their character. It's an ongoing process. The first thing is to find those things that everyone can agree on are historic, and get them in the bin and see how it works. I always tell folks, start slow, but start on a good foundation.
Right. Well, thank you.
Thank you. And you've got my email, you've got my card, and I look forward to hearing from you.
You'll probably be more involved in Rhinebeck again, so you look forward to us.
It's just down the road.
Yeah. We do have an active committee for this, I believe, right? Is the committee still active, Nancy?
The committee is not active. The town board did not reappoint from it beginning of January.
Oh, that's right, because, yeah, we were going to, right? I remember that. Okay.
And my concern is that there are more and more problems coming up for historic buildings in town than this kind of a preservation law would address and would help us so much.
Are there things in the planning board now that are active that are concerned?
Yeah, there are some big construction projects with...
Okay.
And again, my key is always that this is to guide change. There are some times when change is absent, the change proposed is kind of wrong-headed, and there are times when the change is part of the life of the community and the economic well-being of the community, is what we try to do in a way that doesn't eradicate what makes a town run bad.
Right, okay.
Look, I got to ask you one thing, I'm sorry. We have property here, this town park, I'm sorry, artifacts. It's been, we've had archaeologists go through it, we've been going through Chippewa for years. Chippewa says, you can't tear up the top four inches of it to plant grass, but you can put it back to plow. You can go back to having, turn it back to a cornfield. Doesn't make any sense to me at all. Why would you do that?
I'm not the archaeologist, you have to ask them.
But this is why we get nervous when we get with these laws, because that seems like a real...
Well, that is entirely for process. What is the project?
It's the one we talked about earlier. The same one.
It must be federal money in it.
I'm sorry, what?
Is that federal state money in it?
It has county money in it?
It's got county money.
But that doesn't, no, it's not...
The only way we could get involved is through state or federal action. Was it a secret review?
Yes.
You can tell us the law.
Yeah, we know that, but then we get told we can never get another grant from the state if we don't comply with Chippewa.
Well, secret is DEC laws from ours. So DEC is people who are secret, and we can tell you are advisory, and our opinion is advisory and non-binary.
Okay. That's important to know.
I would call DEC, I would call Charles Van Dri, V-A-N-D-R-E-I. DEC, you use your preservation officer in DEC, you walk through the options there. A secret is a DEC and a local law. We are advisory only.
Right, but that's not where we're, we go to, I don't want to drag this on any law, but we call Chippewa, we ask a question, they say, you got to put it on a letterhead, so we put it on a letterhead, send them the question, and we get back an answer, well, we can't really tell you.
Call me. No, call me, I'm at, I'm at a, the speaker report for me.
Here's his card, I got his card.
Well, I got his card.
Call me and I'll see what is, I, let me tell you, I tell folks that I could pressure bureaucracy because I deal with it too. So, and I am, I love to bust my ass.
So you can tell this piece of property is a concern of ours, it's been going on for like at least six years, so...
And we're throwing money away, doing the same damn thing over and over again.
What time do you have to get it off the reviewer's desk and up on my desk?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Julian. Presentation, thank you. Yes, excellent.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to the Affordable Housing Committee.
Oh, boy.
Oh, it's Jonathan.
I'm Jonathan Mench, I'm the chair of the Open Space and Affordable Housing Committee. And we're here tonight because we had gotten with Joe a proposal to do a build-out analysis as part of a proposed affordable housing law that we've given the town board a draft of. And it was suggested that we start by giving a brief overview of what we've been doing for about the last five years, as well as sort of the process that we've been through to get where we are, and the reason behind the request and the rationale behind some of what we're hoping to look at. And I'd just like to start, just to avoid any confusion, because this has come up a few times in the past. What we're talking about here is workforce housing. This is not a very sort of Section 8 kind of housing or a hund-ministered program. This is housing that's geared towards income levels between 80% and 100% of the median income. So this is a program that's geared towards providing affordable housing for people like schoolteachers, for people like town workers, for people that work in the local hospital. It's an opportunity for local workers to live locally, and that's what we're trying to promote. So I wanted to make that point just on the front end to avoid any confusion. When we were formed about five years ago, it was right after the new zoning was passed. And we've spent a lot of time since then looking at a lot of different possibilities with respect to providing workforce housing in the town of Rhinebeck. We started the process with a draft zoning law that had been prepared by the comp plan committee, and that draft zoning law reflected a lot of, a lot of programs that had been put into place in different municipalities across the country, and some of the thinking behind it was geared towards that. We took that draft zoning and we combined it with a number of other zoning texts, both regionally and nationally, to try to see what other municipalities were putting in place to support the goal of providing affordable housing in their townships. We also had a long series of meetings with Ann Saylor from Dutchess County, as well as other experts in the field of workforce housing. At the same time that we were doing that, we were looking at town parcels and trying to look at possibilities that may exist, well, probably not now, given what's happened with the housing market, but could exist in the future with respect to utilizing town properties as a vehicle to help develop additional workforce housing in the town. We were also then looking at the build-out pattern in the town, what the town was trying to accomplish with respect to the zoning text and the way the different zoning designations worked. And we tried to bring that into our own thinking. One of the things that came up pretty quickly as we were looking at this, and this is a challenge that we've been really wrestling with throughout this process, is that when we looked at comparable zoning texts, we were really looking at apples and oranges with respect to the underlying density and the kind of goals that we're trying to be achieved in different municipalities. Most of the affordable, well, actually, all of the affordable housing programs that we looked at were in areas of much greater density than we have here in Rhinebeck, particularly in the low-density areas, the 5, 10, and 20 acres. These were programs that were being put into place in areas of quarter-acre zoning and less. And the way these typical programs work is that somebody that's doing a higher-density development, either through a mandate, or, well, it's usually a mandate coupled with a density bonus, or it's an optional sort of program that involves a density bonus and possibly accelerated planning approval, somebody would be building an affordable housing unit onsite as part of a larger development. The way the economics of that work is that it's very low land cost, it's very low sort of common infrastructure cost, it's common walls, it's common systems, it's a much cheaper way to build. And when you get into it, some of the thinking behind that is that it, the cost to build that unit is about the same as it can get sold for. And then it gets coupled with a density bonus, the outcome of all of that is that it becomes sort of a win-win for the town and for the person that's doing the development. There's a chance to do an additional unit, which creates some small economic benefit to a developer. It also provides a vehicle for the town to get an additional workforce housing unit. That's not something that can work here. And the reason is that we've got 5, 10, and 20-acre zoning. When you get down to 20-acre zoning, you can get into seven figures of land cost. You can't do affordable housing in that kind of context. There's some, so we decided to take a look at other opportunities that could exist that would better match what we were trying to achieve from an open space perspective with a workforce housing program. And what we came up with was a program in which all housing that was built in town would be assessed a dollar a square foot for new housing. So if somebody wants to build a house, it's a dollar a square foot. And part of the thinking behind that is that this is a community goal, and there is a mechanism in place for the community to start contributing towards that goal, sort of across the board. What we also did is we took a variation on the density bonus program that was in place with the initial zoning and was in place in the different examples that we looked at, and applied it to Rhinebeck in the context of taking larger developments on larger pieces of land and providing a framework in which, for $3 a square foot, on top of the dollar a square foot that was being charged for the existing housing that was being proposed, the ability to get a density bonus in exchange for the payment of this additional fee. We looked at both of those numbers in the context of what we saw as today's economic climate. We wanted to start small, and the idea is that that can be built on, particularly the cost of any density bonus program. As the market comes back and as there's some more profitability, we saw the ability to hopefully raise some of those rates and generate some more income. We also saw the benefit of actually raising cash, a real sort of war chest to do these programs in the context of being able to actually buy existing housing, as opposed to going out and mandating the creation of new housing, or trying to create, build new housing as a town, which can become very difficult, especially for a small community. What we do have is a number of multi-unit homes that exist now, in and around the village particularly, but those are by and large affordable from a workforce housing perspective at a rental rate. And there's a possibility in our minds that some of those houses could ultimately be purchased by the town and be continued to run, and actually fixed up in some cases, and then run as a place for people to live at a rate that corresponded with median incomes. We also implemented a program in the Gardens, which is being, they gave a contribution, and this was all in front of the town board earlier, they provided $360,000 of funding to help cover the spread between what those new units are selling for and what they're going to be sold for under our workforce housing program. And we saw that as a little bit of a template for the kind of things that we could do moving forward. If the town were in a position to actually cover that spread through the creation of this funding vehicle, as the rest of the Gardens were built out, we could continue to try to get the 10% affordable housing goal that we've got. So there's ways to do some pretty interesting things, but it requires having some cash in hand to do it. That's been the mindset behind what we're creating, and we're trying to create also something that's pretty simple and easy to administer. Some of the laws that we looked at required a kind of infrastructure that was extensive, and we did not want to go down the road of creating something that was really going to be difficult from an administrative perspective. We also focused, in looking at this, on larger parcels. And this is, I've got a spreadsheet here, which I think is part of the handout that you've been given. But I've given it in the past. We focus on larger parcels because larger parcels can be master-planned, and, meaning that if you've got a large piece of land, there's a four-step process that is part of the town approval process, in which important natural resources are identified, things like view sheds, wetlands, steep slopes, and also setback requirements from town roads. So there's an ability to take all of those things into consideration in the context of a larger parcel, and in that context, actually add some density without, without creating a situation that was going to negatively impact that piece of land. So we saw the ability to do that in that context, in exchange for the payment of an additional fee, which would be used to help achieve the kind of goals that I was just outlining. So those are really the pieces that we were looking at. We've gone through the process, and we selected 30% as the maximum that a density bonus could be on a large piece of land. We chose that because we looked at what the build-out possibility would look at for parcels of different sizes, and what a 30% density bonus would mean in that context. And we felt comfortable with the kind of numbers that we were looking at. I mean, for example, I'm just sort of looking down the sheet here, for a 200-acre parcel in the 10-acre district, under the base density, that would be, somebody could build 20 houses on that 200 acres. With a 30% density bonus, if someone took advantage of the full 30% density bonus and paid the additional fees, it could go up to 26 houses. In our opinion, that wasn't going to create a meaningful change in what the experience was like on that land. What it would do is provide additional funding for us to implement this program.
In that case, do we have an idea about how much increased funding that would give us, or it would all depend on the square footage?
It would depend on the size of the houses, but I mean, to use a, you know, 30, I would say, 4,000-square-foot house, right? I mean, we're talking about big pieces of land, we're probably talking about more expensive housing. That's $12,000 for each house.
Per house, yeah. Okay, got it.
So in that context, we're talking about for the additional three houses, 36, well, it's actually six houses, so it's $72,000. And that $72,000 would be enough money to go and almost cover the spread with two more units, the Gardens. So there's a real value there that gets created in doing this. I mean, that's real money, and it actually can make a difference. As I said earlier, the idea that we've had has been to start in light of, you know, the economy. Right now, it costs more to build houses than you can sell them for. As things change, and as, you know, profit margin starts to re-enter the equation a little bit, the hope is that there's an ability to, you know, go from $3 a foot to $5 a foot, whatever the market can sort of bear in terms of doing that. But we've got a pretty simple mechanism in place that we can build on over time. And what we've done at this point is just look at what's the impact on a particular piece of land. What we haven't done is taken a look at what's the, what is this, what would this mean in terms of the overall town build-out? And, you know, Sally was on our committee, she was intimately involved with some of the creation of the comp plan, obviously, and some of the build-out analysis that were done. She felt that it would probably not have an overly large impact, but we want to find out. And that's what we're trying to, that's what we're asking the money to do, is to get Ted Fink to then take a look at what a 30% density bonus, or potential density bonus on large parcels in the town would look like in terms of the overall build-out numbers. And if that number's too big and conflicts with some of the goals in the comp plan, we can play with it. But until we have the underlying information, we don't, we just don't know. When you look at the overall volumes here, obviously, the biggest impact that a 30% bonus would have on a particular piece of property would be in the 5-acre district, because it's more volume to begin with, 30% and more volume equals a bigger number. It goes down significantly at 10, it goes down to a very small difference at 20. So it could be that when we get the final numbers, we can play with some of these percentages and see what makes the most sense, given that we're not trying to create a situation that fundamentally changes in any way what the total build-out would look like. We're trying to be cognizant of that. But until we know what a proposal means, or what, you know, the implications are, we just, we're sort of guessing.
So you want, you need to seek out more help to, from Ted Fink to...
Yeah, what we're asking for is money from Ted. He gave a proposal of $2,000.
Oh, is it?
Right, there is a resolution here. I made it for $3,000, so we have a little extra in case it goes over. Where we are is both John Lyons and Ted Fink have looked at the draft, they both have signed off on the language. We need a SECA analysis because of the density bonus.
Do we have the resolution?
Yeah, it's...
Do we have it going, from it?
In the package, number seven.
Seven.
And as part of the SECA analysis, there will be a build-out analysis, as John says, we'll look at, the committee will look at that and make a recommendation from that, whether they want to stay with the proposed 30%, whether they want to change it, whether they want to change it among different districts. Again, nothing is fixed, even the $3 a square foot. We can, as a town board, can raise it, lower it, we can do anything, but we need these basic tools to decide what 30% would be.
Will Ted give us his opinion on those types of things as well as just the study? Will that be part of the study?
Well, you can ask, but I don't know why his opinion is any better than our opinion as to what the appropriate number is. He can certainly give us what other towns have done.
John, is this taken to...
In terms of amounts, but...
This is not pertaining to agricultural...
As I say, we need to build out analysis.
This is not pertaining to agricultural property.
Pretty modest.
It's different, right?
How soon...
Like ag land would be more density anyways.
Well, I mean, it would...
Tom, I'm sorry, what was the question?
Agricultural land in their zoning, I guess, has got a better benefit of zoning and so on, so, I mean, this, that should somehow be involved in this with Ted's review.
Yeah, well, what agricultural land, what can happen as a vehicle to protect agricultural land? If you own a farm, you can actually transfer your development rights or sell your development rights to, to, I think it's any other property in the district, or maybe it's just adjacent, I'm not sure on this. But it would be, you can sell it, not at, say, if you're in the 10-acre district, you can sell it, you can sell your development rights at a rate of 5 acres.
I think there's a, I think there's an extra, a fourth acre provision in there, too. It's been a long time since I've seen this document, but I think it goes deeper into that, too, so...
Well, there's also considerations about the use of prime soils as part of a development. And that's one of the things that gets addressed as part of the four-step process.
Yeah.
But this is, there's definitely provisions that provide a sort of, an ability for farmers to keep farms as working farms, and then sell the development rights at a higher number of units than they would otherwise be allowed, as an incentive to try to keep that in place.
Right. We have to, I mean, I got to support this because I think Ted is the guy who would know all these things rather than go to somebody new, so if you need any, I don't know, let's have a motion.
Does he have a sense of how soon it can begin?
Let's have a motion in second, first, and talk about it. Motion, I'll motion for it.
I still move that we authorize the build-out analysis for up to $3,000.
Mike, did you have any comments?
Well, I did, I did.
I'm sorry, did you?
I spoke with John, I spoke with...
Big deal.
Well, my concern's about a density bonus. My understanding is, you're talking about a build-out analysis as part of a SECA review?
Yes.
All right, the SECA, basically, you're talking a 30% potential increase in density in the town. You know what the SECA review and review process was for our current comp plan, from which our current zoning law is derived, and our density, our area and bulk regulations? This is not a minor operation. Under SECA, you have to take a hard look at these things. It's not just how many more houses will be built, it's what the impact on the schools, on the taxes, on our roads, all these different things. And you also have to look at alternatives. The alternative of doing nothing, how much money would be raised for affordable housing? The alternative of the density bonus possibly at different levels? The alternative of rezoning the town, so you're returning some of the property rights to residents who lost those rights when we upzoned everything? That's another way you get greater density in the town. These are all things you have to look at under SECA to take a hard look. So what I would like to strongly recommend, that if you're going to proceed with this, that you have a draft scoping document circulated to the CAB, the planning board, other industry agencies, to make sure that all the different areas, which were looked at when we did the comp plan and the zoning we have now, are looked at again, because 30% is not an insignificant amount. And on some of our different community areas, some of the projects coming before us now areas, some of the projects coming before us now already are going to possibly overwhelm our road network, other areas, community services that under our current zoning law are going to be difficult for us to deal with. So this is not something that's so simple to just pass and go with. 30% is a lot to change in our zoning law. We spent seven years putting it together. This is not something to do quickly. So if you're going to go ahead with this, which is perfectly fine to look at, a lot of the parts in that affordable housing law, I think are fine. You've really got to talk to the different groups in the town that helped to regulate some of the other laws and the other regulations we have to make sure that the scoping document is complete. So the SECA review itself is also complete. So you actually have a full picture, not an opinion of what it might be or what it might not be. You've got to know what it is because this is for the future of the community. And some of the people who have made some proposals to come before the planning board, they have some plans that I don't think you would care for. And you want to make sure that you have the laws, just as Julian was saying earlier, to protect our community. We've done a pretty good job so far of doing that, but it'd be very easy to screw it up. So.
Doesn't this zoning density bonus in a sense throw our comprehensive plan into question? We've already decided what density should be. So we're actually allowing more.
I think that it challenges our zoning law, it challenges our zoning law by trying to change the density, which is based upon the comp plan. By law, the zoning law is derived from the comp plan, the decisions we made as to what we wanted in the community, what the quality of life we wanted. Those are the sort of decisions we made. If you're gonna try to go another 30%, you've got to review those, go back and revisit those and see, is 30% possible or 20% or whatever? Or does it compromise the goals of the comp plan? Do we then want a new comp plan? This is, this is not the simple thing that it's being proposed as density bonuses. This is a significant change to our community.
I want to just make a very clear, uh, I want to make a clarification so that everybody absolutely gets this. We're not talking about a 30% across the board density bonus. What we're talking about is a density bonus program that's limited to only larger parcels for the reason that I outlined. They can be better master planned. The, the opinion that we've been given from people that have been, you know, through this process from a planning perspective, is that the expectation, at least that we have at this point as a committee, right? We don't know. I mean, I completely agree with Michael. We will not going to know until we actually get the analysis from Ted. That's going to tell us. I mean, we're talking about abstractions until we do that. But we're not looking, we're looking at a, I, what I think will be a relatively small percentage of properties in terms of, in terms of volume.
Are we going to identify the parcels within this study of what would be acceptable for consideration under a density bonus?
I assume he's gonna have to come up with a number. First, he has to figure out which parcel.
No, so we'll identify what a large parcel is?
We know what a large parcel is. It's, uh, it's either in a 20 acre zone, it's 200 acres. That's a large parcel. In a 10 acre zone, it's 100 acres.
It's here.
In a five acre zone, it could be much more than 50 acres because for the five acre zone,
The steep slopes and the water.
You take out natural resources. But I've spoken to Ted. He will include traffic. He thinks there is enough data from the previous studies to include traffic. He says he can include schools. Uh, I gather in schools enrollment is going down. So I don't think that's really a, a, a big deal. Hopefully, we don't create another huge project here to eat up our million and a quarter that we spent on it. I, I don't think this merits that kind of thing. I know some people hate the concept of density bonuses. It's not something that this committee created. It's in the skeleton draft. Now, Michael and I have had a discussion as to whether it's mandated or just recommended. But even if it's recommended, density bonuses were part of the concept that, uh, was passed in 2009. I think we have something from the audience.
Yeah, and I just want to say, density bonuses, not, they're not, they weren't just in the draft law. We asked Hudson River Housing, you know, who administers our program, how are, uh, you know, are they a part of what you're dealing with? And the answer was, in every single instance, yes. I mean, this is something that's a very standard piece. Uh, you know, the other piece that's used is an accelerated approval process. We're not recommending that because we don't think it's a good idea. Um, but we do feel pretty strongly that it's important to create a structure that is economically viable. And if we try to create a law that people can't adhere to because the economics don't work, then we're not passing an effective law. And that's something that as a committee, we all feel very strongly about. This has got to work when the rubber hits the road. That's why we're making the recommendation that we are.
I want to make the point that I, you know, we believe, again, I think we might have a little disagreement about this, that our comp plan says that we have to offer the opportunity for workforce housing, not that we mandate it. So I'm just concerned that we're, I think it's worth looking at.
I understand you. Go ahead.
I'll just finish.
Could I comment?
Let, let, uh, what's your name?
Elizabeth.
You know, look, uh, we have on the floor a vote to get some, and I just want to vote, get this vote passed this. And, you know, Dodd's one of the, one of the voters on the comp plan.
Just comment very briefly?
All right, go ahead, Dodd.
The, the, certainly the intent of the committee I was on, which was the Affordable Housing Committee, is called the comp plan, was not that it be intended, but it's mandatory that we address affordable housing in Reinbeck. And I believe that, uh, a good lawyer's review will reveal to you that that is something you, you need to do and must do.
So you believe it is mandated, not encouraged?
I believe it is mandated. It was certainly our intent. And I believe the greater good of this board is that you make sure that happened regardless of whether you personally agree with it or not. I think it's the right thing to do for Reinbeck based on the interviews I've had with numerous people and campaigning and around town in terms of the lack of affordable housing in town. So I think it's number one, it's the right thing to do. I believe it's mandated in the law. Uh, and I, I also believe that, while I understand Michael's concerns, the, the public and the board should understand, and I know Tom and Bruce having gone through it, understand that, that it's not 30% of all the units in the town. It's 30% of certain selected parcels where they would get a 30% bonus. I believe if you look at the number of tracks that are buildable to the scale you're talking about in the 10, 20 and 5 acre zone, when you get all done, I bet Ted will come out with maybe 100 units, maybe 50, maybe 150. I, I remember looking at maps where we looked at the, all the parcels in the 20, the 10 and the 5. There were relat, there were some big ones in the 10, big ones in the 20, but the 20 acre zoning, so you don't get many units anyway. So 10 is the primary area. There aren't that many large parcels in the 5 acre zone where you can get that many units. So my recommendation to you is before you get too tied up in SECA and all these other things, I would do two things. I would do a, get Ted to do a quick thumbnail analysis of how many units you're really talking about in the buildable areas that you've designed into your suggested size for what's a large parcel. Find out that parcel count and then consult with the land use attorneys on whether, um, you are, how much you are really required to do in terms of SECA and all the elaborate things you could get bogged down in in terms of cost and time to revise the law if you're only talking about, say, 70 units or 100 units or 50 units. So.
Yeah, I, I think Dodd's accurate. I agree with him that if we are required to follow through on some sort of an affordable workforce housing program, and that was one of the risks with our, with our plan.
We thought we should do it. I, I think the number of two units you're really talking about is pretty low. And I would do a quick thumbnail on that and then decide whether you have to get into all the elaborate processes that cost you time and money.
Well, I think that would go on to the property owner if we got to that. If somebody wants to develop something beyond, that would be an escrow issue. That would come from somebody else's escrow.
Yeah, that's right. That was another thing we learned is let the, let the developer pay for the detailed analysis of their property.
Dodd, the proposal from Ted Fink is $2,000 for the whole thing.
Yeah.
He thinks that may satisfy SECA. Let, let's see what, what it is. Uh, the 30% is not fixed on stone.
So let's, uh, just go on.
Okay, yeah. I think it's a no brainer.
You might determine whether you even need to do SECA.
Well, I think, I think John Lyons has weighed in that we have to do it, but, uh, let's see.
So you guys want to vote on this? All in favor, aye?
What we're talking about.
Aye.
Sort of the build out analysis.
Yeah, I'm aye.
Any further ayes?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Okay, that's all moved. All right. Uh, thanks, John, definitely. And thanks to committee, the Waterfront Housing Committee. So we have a one more presentation. It's from the LRC of the Reincliff Waterfront.
We need them now.
Patricia Nguyen, Chair for the Reincliff Waterfront Committee. If you recall, I came before the board in August to remind you of a DEC grant that we have obtained and are ready to contract, um, out on. There was a little misunderstanding at the time that I came before you, we had ended it, that we would move forward with an RFP because we thought that that was the next step that was needed. Um, we have since found out that we don't actually need to do an RFP. There's no one that's requiring it. I guess the town of Reinbeck does not require it. The DEC is not requiring it. So this evening, um, I have here with me Rod Morrison and Kelly Leibl of LRC, which is the company that we had presented, uh, we, the Reincliff Waterfront Committee, as our choice, um, to contract this DEC grant with. So I'm going to turn it over to them.
Thank you for your patience.
You're welcome. Rodney Morrison, professional engineer from LRC group, and Kelly Leibl is not in the LRC group. She's a, a partner of ours that we do a lot of work with. Um, not needing a, a, any further RFP process would be great because we've been put through a lot so far by the waterfront committee. So, um, and, uh, we have been talking to them, uh, since, I think, February, maybe January, something like that. So there has been a, a bunch of back and forth in process. So, um, we understood you wanted to meet us and hear from us. Quick background, uh, you know, I live here.
Well, before you get into that, just give me the context again. It was a few months ago that they were here. What are we trying to, are we trying to decide anything?
Um, whether or not to give the contract for this DEC grant to the water.
For a study for waterfront development.
And we have a grant to pay for that? Or we don't have a grant? Or we gotta pay for part of it? What?
Right. To remind the, the board, um, that we do, we do have the grant. Actually, we are just finalizing the extension. Um, it was expiring this month and I believe that Supervisor Trout signed off on extending it for a year. Um, and the DEC is aware that we're extending. Um, the grant is for $30,000 and the town is to match $10,000. So it's a total of $40,000 to be spent on a feasibility study. Does that answer your questions?
Yeah, it gives us context.
Thank you, Patricia.
So the point of the study is, is simple. We create a, a good legitimate, in-depth, technical, planning solid document that lets, uh, the committee and the town go further and pursue grant applications. So that's, that is, that is a large part, is certainly the goal of it. And in there, we do some evaluation of the current waterfront. Uh, we take in consideration the other planning elements, the, the, some of the stuff mentioned by the historic preservation guy here tonight. And as best that we can through this study, because we, we do not like studies that sit on shelves, is that is the impetus and the tool to, to go out and get the grants and to pursue section by section. So as we work through that with the committee, I'm sure we'll be back here talking about the content, ultimately how things could be staged if there is, as it's planned out. I know in the kiosk down there now, there's, there's some sketch of what could be done. That's certainly a portion of it, but there's also the other portions, uh, how it integrates with the town of Reinbeck, how economically, you know, everything is connected. So, um, that's really, that's what the end game, the end result will be when we're done.
As part of our $10,000 that we have to outlay, do you, did it sound to you like we could go to that Jillian for one, oh, we have to have that law in place to be able to go to him?
What?
Right. That, sorry. That, I answered my own question. That Jillian said that he gives five to $10,000 grants, but you have to have signed on to his law.
But you know what it is though? There's, there, there are grant opportunities in all sorts of things. We were, we were discussing earlier with Patricia, the team that we represent here, we're doing Quiet Cove redevelopment for the, for, in Poughkeepsie, for the county. So in there, in our conversation with estuaries from DEC, they're, they've already put on the table, hey, we have another grant opportunity if we go do this in the Hudson River. So, so we're gonna, that's gonna be an add-on to the project there and we're gonna end up building some fisheries in the river down there. So, so those things occur through the process of developing the document, through talking to the DEC and so on and so forth. So they, they're, they happen. The opportunities are out there at different times. So.
You're gonna come up with ideas as to what we could do with the waterfront?
We, we have to create a, a good master plan for the enhancement reconstruction of the Reincliff waterfront area. Yes.
Something that can be built, something that can be promoted.
What kinds of things could we do there? What, what, you know, I know you gotta do your plan and, but what kinds of things are we talking about?
Well, you could, for instance, there's, there's been conversation about, uh, you know, a more of a, more person friendly boat dock. There's a place to put kayaks in because right now you have where you can, you can back a boat in, but that bulkhead is, is purely larger, larger boat, larger ship docking. There's, uh, there's always been the conversation of coming back and forth from Hudson, uh, not from Hudson, from Kingston over to here, which, you know, it's, it's fits and starts, but, you know, there's how you can connect that potentially better to that street front in there between, uh, between the businesses that are there. How you bring that even further up into, into connecting it to the village of Reinbeck and the town of Reinbeck. So.
Just enhancement of that bulkhead, you know, bulkhead restoration and even maybe do an additional promenade and some old passive recreational uses up to that. You're really a part of the, of the park.
But as a group, we do, we do work like this and have for years and years. Uh, this is home turf for me. So I'm really interested in, in being part of it.
Bruce has guaranteed me that, uh, our $10,000 will not be wasted because we're gonna get grants. Are you really optimistic that, uh, we're gonna get grants?
Well, you know, Kelly can talk to that, but just in what I'm, what I'm.
If she can, let her.
What we, my brief story there about our work with the DEC at Quiet Cove is they present themselves, additional opportunities do. So.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that we do, we want to try to do is create a plan that works for you, that you can build, that you can build and you can get money. So the project that we're working on with the county was funded primarily by the state through DEC and money from estuaries.
What kind of project was that, that you got money for?
Quiet Cove was the, um, it's a bulkhead stabilization. They have a pier there that they wanted to enhance passive recreational use, fishing, just viewing of the river. Um, they have a different bulkhead than you do. So there's different types of uses. They have a shallow area. They want to enhance, um, that area because there's erosion and with the weeks and the storms and the ice, vehicles traveling, letting down the, um, the waterway, it's eroding that area away. So one of the things that we're doing is different, um, installation is riding and indicating different types of plants and riprap to enhance that area, but also to create habitat for additional fish. So we're doing that and we're creating a, um, another kayak launch, passive recreational uses. They have buildings there that they're gonna start leasing, um, space for kayaks, similar to what they did in Beacon. I don't know if you've seen what they've done down there. Um, just to create more activity and more uses with the limited area. I know you, you don't have a lot of area there, but I think there are additional things that we could do. And again, the goal is to try to create a plan that DEC likes and see if we can get some additional money from them. They're really encouraged in trying to create slope stabilization. So they're generating revenue that, um, for towns that create plans that will enhance that. That's the goal.
Thank you.
What, what are you gonna do about parking? I, I mean, I didn't see that in here, anything about parking and I'm, I'm.
Well, it's, it's commented on in the original documents of parking.
Yeah, we don't have any.
Yeah, it's, it's a tough situation. So, um, I, I don't know the answer just yet in part because you've got, your, your big unknown is dealing with a railroad, be it CSX, Amtrak, whoever. So, um, there is absolutely not much parking down there. I've been trying to park there for a lot of years. So.
Well, that's like one of the things for the kayak use is if you can create a shelter where people can actually keep their kayaks and they can wane to the area and they don't have to bring their vehicle down. So you can create situations where people don't have to drive and then they can use their property for the.
The, the, I, I guess where I'm going, I, I understand that. I also understand the spud barge thing. We, we talked about that. I don't know if you folks have talked about that, big floating casino almost. Um, but, but the thing, you know, you can build it up while you want, but if, if you can't park there, then, then it annoys everybody else in Reincliff. Um, and, and so that's, I think you've got to somehow address that problem upfront.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's the kind of, those are the kind items. There's a list of 15 or so items there to look at and you have to see which ones prevail. You know, we as well have dealt with the Army Corps and permit conditions in the Hudson and it has to be realistic. You can draw a great picture of a kayak dock going out 50 feet into the Hudson, but if you can't get permits for it, you know, you have to be balanced in reality to set the stage to go get the grants. So, and they're not, things aren't going to be available at the same time. So it has to be set up such that it's a master plan that, that you ultimately approve. That's endorsed by the county executive. That's endorsed by county planning. So it's, it has all the pieces together when the right time comes.
I think we've already voted the 10,000.
Years and years and years ago.
Well, I thought about two meetings ago.
There's an interest growth on that, right?
But, um, assuming we can't get a grant right away to implement this, will the plan you come up with, uh, be good? So it, you know, five years, 10 years, 20 years from now, it can be brought out if money's available?
That is our plan. That is what we want to create. Cause we know it doesn't all come at once. We've been working, I've been working with Bard for three straight years trying to get a grant for a green infrastructure project. And it's just, it's partly timing. It's a matter of what creates, it's how you present it too. Do you create economic growth? Is there that, I guess trickle down, uh, of, of benefit, you know? So, it's timing.
The other thing is to create a plan that doesn't have to be implemented all at once, to create pieces of it. So, for example, with Quiet Cove, there are components that we can take out, you know, because it doesn't come in the right way. So, we can create a plan that equals two stages.
And we're being asked tonight to authorize a contract with this company?
Mm-hmm.
Have, we looked at other companies? Was there a bidding process or anything? Maybe you can address that.
You want to speak to that, Patricia? They did interview a couple of other companies. Others aren't interested. These guys have always been interested and been there from the beginning. I think they've shown a commitment to the process, and the other ones didn't.
Right. If you remember, when I spoke before the board at the last meeting, I had said that we reached out to three companies. We were specifically looking for waterfront engineering firms that had experience in coastal and tidal waterfront development. And the other two companies that we had found that seemed qualified were both located in Connecticut. One company came to meet with us on two separate occasions, and there was a lot of back and forth, and ultimately, they were not interested in submitting a proposal for the job. And the second company, again, after some back and forth, they never did come to visit the site, but did not seem interested because the distance and not knowing the local structure of the area. LRC is local, and they're here, and they're more than willing to take on this project, so.
So, I got to say.
Located where?
I founded the company right here, Red Hook, actually. I moved to Rhinebeck in 1993, and somehow managed to find myself in Red Hook with three children. So, half of my firm's here. I have an office south of Hartford, too. So, we're, you know, we're local folks.
So, it's clear that the committee went through the process to find other firms to do this work, and LRC seems to be the most fit and willing and able to do it for us, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, second.
Any seconds? I'll second.
I thought you said you made the motion, so I did second.
Seeing the contract.
So, I'll second, and we'll approve it pending the contract?
Great.
Right. We'll have Warren look at the contract.
Well, that isn't a contract.
What?
The proposal's not a contract.
Right. But when we get a contract, we'll have Warren to look at it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thanks again for waiting so long.
So moved.
Thank you.
Let's go on to business items. The resolution approving abstract nine vouchers V-851 through V-896, 39 checks for $86,064.34.
I wouldn't either.
Motion, second.
Motion?
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Close, so moved. Item two is a resolution approving preliminary capital project 2013, abstract two, checks for $9,935. Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's so moved. Item three, authorizing the issuance of a manual check for petty cash. This is for, well, motion and second?
Motion, second.
Any discussion?
I looked at them. I did, too.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Item four is a motion to waive the fee for the Rhine Cliff Volunteer Fire Company event.
Motion.
Motion, second.
Let me ask, what is this?
It's probably the...
Chili cook-off.
Chili cook-off.
Yes, chili cook-off, and it's a gathering, so they have to pay a $50 fee. Normally, we waive it because it's firehouse.
Yep. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, so moved. Item six is a resolution to town, response to the town of Mylan Lead Agency coordination request. Motion, second?
Motion.
Second.
Again, what is this? What contract?
Cell Tower.
I'm sorry, Cell Tower?
Cell Tower.
In Mylan?
Yes. It's on Red Wing property.
So, we're going to let them be the lead agencies, is what we're...
Yes, theirs.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, so on to item eight, we dealt, did we deal with seven? We approved seven.
Did we vote for it? Okay, we did.
Right. Okay. Item eight is a resolution approving, resolution altering the membership status of the agent committee member. Apparently, that person doesn't live in Rhinebeck, correct? Or does, or whatever?
Correct.
Okay. Motion and second?
Motion.
What are we doing?
We're allowing her to be ex officio because she doesn't actually...
No, it's actually not an ex officio.
What?
I understand.
No, I spoke to, unless someone else wants to speak to this. I spoke to Marcia de Blasio, our chair of the agent committee today, and they have, the resolution to establish them allows for two different types of members. One is a resident member, and others are experts who work on the committee. This woman is an expert. It just wasn't explained to us. On August 1st, 5th, she is a member that would represent local organizations or agencies, background and experience, and more important than being a resident of Rhinebeck because that brings a broader perspective to their mission. So, she's not ex officio, she's a member...
Oh, it's ab initio, I'm sorry.
She's allowed to be on here because she's an expert. She works at Fern Cliff.
Love that.
Elizabeth, does this apply to other committees?
I don't know. This is what is in the resolution establishing this committee, and this is what this member is. We have different, there are statutory boards with electorate requirements. This is how this committee was set up. It seems fine, and she's, you know, she's got a lot of expertise, and they need her.
I was just wondering if we could apply this to other committees, because we have had ongoing discussion.
You have to pull the resolution, how the committee was started and then amended, or put forth an amendment, if you like. So, yeah, I apologize to the committee for this being held up, but we didn't have this information, so now we do.
So, any thoughts on this?
I think it's a good thing. I'm all for it.
Sounds like we ought to do it.
All right, so all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item, thus, the discussion items is town-run adult education basketball volleyball program.
That one was, the school no longer can afford to do the adult education in an efficient way, so they pared back their adult education. The two things that they wanted to keep were basketball and volleyball. It cost them more for a coordinator than, it was like two and a half times what they brought in, what it cost them for a coordinator. So, they approached us, and they approached Tom, and somehow it got to me. So, I went and met with them. There's, it's adult stuff. It's spring and fall. There's two sessions. Basketball, two nights, I think, and volleyball, two nights or one night. There's three nights a week, something like that. About 40 people, 25 bucks a session. Comes out to about two grand. We have two volunteers already who say they'll coordinate it for us. We keep it going. We're cooperating with the school. We're sharing services. They'll do the scheduling of the gym, so we don't have to worry about that. All we have to do is have somebody make sure that people that are playing are the ones that have signed up.
So, it would be at the school, not at our rec?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's winter.
Is our rec coordinator going to stay on throughout the year?
That's a different issue, and let's not discuss that at this...
I mean, but do we, can we, I bring it up because can we, do we have the manpower to oversee this?
Right now, it's a couple of volunteers that are in the programs.
Okay.
So...
Bruce, are we taking on liability? When you say we have a couple of volunteers...
Well, when we switched over to the new insurance company, we asked them, and they said volunteers are covered under our liability.
We're fine.
All right.
Great.
All right, so motion and second?
So, if everybody's okay with it, I'll just tell them we'll do it.
Good.
All right, I'm good with it.
We're all okay?
You want to vote on it?
Do we need to vote?
We want to get a team together?
All right, let's vote just for the heck of it. Please, I'm sorry.
Might as well. I don't want anybody to say we didn't vote on it.
All right.
So, a motion and second to accept the programs.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Nope. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, that's so moved.
I think we should get a team together.
We can. Tuesday nights.
Town board.
Take them down.[1237.66][1237.66](Laughter). Okay. Something about a winter's farmers market, a cattle market?
Yeah, I put this on two, three things. One, we did get an impassioned letter from a neighbor. I think we've all seen that. I don't think we have to read it. You may want to attach it to the minutes. Second thing, I have been speaking to the winter's farmers market, and they've decided that they will stay with the two sessions a month. They don't want to go to the three. And the third thing is, I'm drafting the contract. It's last year, basically last year's contract with a few minor things. But the question is, do we want to increase the charge or not? We now charge them $125 a session.
Are we adding the floor waxing before or after?
Yes, I added a provision for the floor waxing.
Do we know what that cost usually is?
I have no idea.
Bruce, do you know?
It takes two days, one day to strip it and one day to, so it'd be 1433 times 16 plus...
So, a couple hundred dollars.
Yeah.
That's a bit of an increase there.
You're going to do it twice, once in the middle and once...
No. At least what I drafted is once at the end.
We're going to slog through here for a couple months.
Brutal. It's brutal.
Okay.
I would like to get it done in the middle.
I'd like to get it done at the beginning of the season and at the end. That's, to start with a clean slate and then have it be nice when they finish.
One of the suggestions, Wayne, was, could they possibly consider the Legion as a place? Has ever been considered?
I think they've never approached the Legion, but I certainly, I think that would be a, I don't think, it would certainly be open minded for that.
It's not quite, I mean, that's, that room is...
It's not a bad spot.
It's lower ceiling, but the floor space is almost the size of this.
Yeah, I think it's a bigger one.
Do you think it's possible, you know, what they really came in is they wanted to have it every Sunday. I don't know if that Legion space is used every Sunday during the winter.
They would have to have some kind of contingency there because we do have scenarios where, you know, better retract the castle, or we have a funeral scenario, or something like that. So, we have to have a contingency where we have.
I have that in our contract. So, I can suggest that they may want to talk to the Legion at some point.
It would certainly be open minded considering that. But I also, you mentioned that there were some repairs. You talk about the repair, you know, the cleaning of the floors. You also mentioned that there was some damage as well. Is that something that you also want to consider, or...
There hasn't been since that initial time that a truck backed up to the step, and they paid for the repair of the front step. But not to my knowledge has there been any other damage.
Yeah, I'm not sure that the front step was damaged.
Yeah, we weren't really sure about that.
Right. And I don't think, I don't think repairs have been an issue.
I thought I recall somebody mentioning something about the floor was actually damaged.
There was, there was the outside floor, that was the, a truck leak oil or something on the walkway last year, but they cleaned it up.
Oh, also, people talk about dragging of the chairs.
Yeah, that the tile was scraped, maybe, but I think it's going to come out, yeah.
Yeah, we think it's just the surface. So, what do you want to do on the waxing? You want to wax before and after?
Every, every session.
What?
Every week, every, twice a month.
Rub on, rub off, right?
Serious time.
Have you, have you spoken to the neighbors? Has anybody reached out to them? I have a call-in to them.
I told them that I thought it would be every two weeks.
I see them whether I want to or not.
So, look, if we're renewing the contract, I say it every year, I'd like to make somehow let, allow a space available for a Rhinebeck farmer to be able to be part of the farmers' market here in Teton, because simply it's not...
That's a good point.
Not happening.
Why isn't it? I mean...
Elizabeth, you should talk to Steve Block. I've raised this, and without getting too much into it, because it relates to when people applied and not initially, but there's a whole story there.
However, as a town board using the town hall, I would like to make that part of this contract, as I did it for the past couple of years. I mean, certainly, like Red Hook, he shows, uses their farmers' market to showcase Red Hook's farms, and there are none in the Rhinebeck farmers' market.
And if they don't have anybody that's in the market now, then we leave it at 10 square feet or whatever it is.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not saying for any specific...
For Rhinebeck.
Person, just for somebody in Rhinebeck who might want to use it.
You'll have fun with that one, Joe.
What?
You'll have fun with that one.
I'll raise it. They want to come in, let them come in and talk about it. You know, each of us could talk to them.
I'm saying, I'm not...
You know, Tom, you should talk to Steve Block about it.
I talked to them while they were here the last time. And I'm not talking about a process of who gets involved in the farmers' market organization. I'm just saying, as a town hall, we should provide a space for a local farmer to be able to showcase themselves here. That's all.
So, you want one space for a local farmer?
Any, any local farmer. It can be, a space that is available for any Rhinebeck local farmer to use as.
Does a local farmer show any interest in being involved?
Yeah.